What you have presented to us, it was appreciated having more in-depth information on that.
Thank you.
It's been moved by Councilman Addy that we approve the notice of publication for the fiscal year 2017, the city budget, and for a hearing on August the 16th at 7:00. Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Miller. Is there any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the airport grants. And this is the one that we got earlier for $25,000 and it wasn't enough to fund the project?
That's correct.
Yes. Went back to KDOT.
Yeah, went back, they've increased it. So it's one of those 90-10 grants where the city comes up with 10% of the match.
This is approach lighting for anybody that doesn't, for lighting or for the...
And this is supposed to help the large planes come in and implement weather.
No.
The towers try to explain it to them if they're, I thought, okay, we're not a pilot. But anyway, I think it would be great for our community to have. I think part of it is already in place, but just need, I think the hardware and everything is what they're waiting on. It's one of my business priorities. So I entertain a motion that we accept the grant offer from KDOT.
So moved?
That moved by Councilman, was that you were in?
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilman Ponto, that we accept the KDOT grant for $47,000, $22,000. Seconded by Councilman Graybon. Is there any further comment? No further comment. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is metal pole bids from Becker Supply in an amount of $18,783.52.
Just had a question, are these poles for West Breeze?
These things.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Been moved by Councilman Graybon that we accept a bid for Becker Supply in the amount of $18,783.52. Seconded by Councilman Frano. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on your agenda this evening is the FinCool agreement.
Jim's mainly, but...
I tabbed it wrong. Okay, Katie, do you have some comments on this?
Uh, no. Jim is kind of heading up this project. I guess we have questions for him. I think he's here. Essentially, this will just be filed of record because they are planning to go over that easement, so it's pretty self-explanatory. Any expenses, if we have to excavate any of that, they are responsible for any and all of those expenses associated with their building being on that.
Any questions for Jim from the council?
Do you see any problems with the gym?
No, not doing it this way. With Katie's legal tees on it, it covers us in case there is a problem in the future. And the other line being moved to where it would not be an interference for them pretty much takes care of anything foreseeable.
Heather?
Go ahead, I'll do that one first. It's just going to be an expansion that I can't really talk about yet, but it's a great expansion. It's good for the company and it'll be good for the community too.
Thank you. What are your questions?
I don't see marked on here. Where is the gray water line that was the one that's going to be moved?
It hasn't really been mapped. It's approximately nine foot west of the wastewater line. And then that's going to be moved from...
And follows it?
And follows it, yes.
Okay.
Down that diagonal.
So it's not actually under the building?
It would be under the new expansion and where that's a private pressure line. We could not have that.
Yeah.
So that's why we're going to move the agreement to move the gray water line and the new easement for that, to move it, you know, so there's not a pressure line underneath any of that area in case there's future expansion.
Thank you. Jim, I've got a question. How much size of each of those lines? The gray water line in comparison to the sewage line?
The sewer line is a 10-inch and the gray water line is a 6-inch. We did, we did look at whether we could bring the sewer line, wastewater line, around the possible addition, but we don't have the grade to allow that.
Because that's what I was wondering, what the possibility was to prevent things from happening in the future if we would move both lines?
That is what I, the first thing I looked at with Stewart's, Randy, Strode with Stewart's Company, you know, helping me figuring out grade that it just couldn't be done that way.
Answer that question.
It was roughly four times flatter than the minimum design standards that KDHE will allow if we were to reroute it. So it just wouldn't work.
Any other question? I entertain a motion to approve the agreement with FinCool. That moved by Councilman Camillo that we approve the agreement with FinCool. Have a second? Seconded by Councilman Gaimler. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening is the merit increases above pay range.
Things I learned after coming here was the number of longtime employees that you have here working for the city. You have a lot of loyalty and a lot of talent that has been here through the years. Many of them have reached the top step in the pay range. And that's where they're, they're pretty much frozen in place. Unless during, the council periodically provides a cost of living increase. I have a suggestion for you called a merit increase above the maximum salary in a pay range to provide a lump sum once annually pay increase. And that is to take 2% of the top salary in a pay grade. For somebody who's been here nine years or longer, that means they haven't been jumped ahead in the pay grades. They've legitimately been here and have tenure. And so we take 2%, make a one-time annual payment for them. So you wouldn't, this would at least allow them to keep current with maybe the cost of living as it goes up. And it also would be an incentive to keep people in a competitive pay range if they're doing a job where the pay is better someplace else. So it's something I've used in recommending in other pay plans and other places I've provided services. And I thought it might be helpful to the employees here too. Yeah, I've got an explanation of the process here that I provided all of you so you can see how it works.
Lloyd?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
How long is it going to be until we get done with our pay, our salary project that we're working with?
They will not begin work until September 1st. They're going to start at that point.
And how long does that process take?
I suspect by the 1st of January, they should have some recommendations for you. There's nothing recommended in the, in the new budget in terms of pay increases. Except the normal process where somebody's eligible for merit increase. So everything is frozen in place at this time. But, so I was just addressing the backlog of those people who have gone several years without any pay increase at all.
Andrew?
Doesn't a lump sum cause in some cases people to be bumped into a higher tax bracket for that tax on that paycheck? Because I've seen that cause issues in other locations.
A lump sum payment is, would be added to their end of the year benefit too. Sure, it's, it's part of their salary.
I guess what I'm getting at is I've seen it where, because it's a lump, that one paycheck is taxed at a much higher rate than if it was broken up over multiple paychecks because then it's not kicking that person to the next tax bracket on every single check. I'm just trying to think of what minimizes the impact to the employee because they actually gain more if it's spread out versus one lump.
Yeah, right. That could happen, I think, in almost every instance here. The amount of pay would be not significant enough to move them into another tax bracket though.
Lloyd?
Me personally, I just think that this needs to wait until after we have that study salary to see where that all falls out. Could we give them more money? Because we don't know what their salary should be and that should, that should include whatever cost of the living adjustments or whatever to this point in time. Is that not correct?
Kevin?
I guess I'd like to admit that from, you know, I worked a little along the park place. Small, tiny. We've given costs of living raises here to our employees here. Being on my end, I get a cost of living raise. I present this to my employer, it's not going to fly. So I guess, what do the big boys do? Sunflower, CPS? What's their policies on things like this?
Well, we get an annual evaluation in 12 to 14 months. And then it's based upon what corporate decides. It starts out at 2 and 3/4% and there's nothing guaranteed by the time that it's approved. And it might drop down to 3/4 of the percentage, it's varied yearly. It's what we kind of see. So I think private, private industry is a lot different than municipalities when it comes to pay and increases. And because it seems like most cities and counties always give a cost of living raise and the private industry we're not always, we don't always get a cost of living to think of what's going on. And so it's two different ones.
And you're just talking about people that have been there for nine years or more and at the top of their pay scale?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This may be tricky, but if you've been there nine years, what's the likelihood that you are at the top of your pay scale?
Pretty likely.
Pretty good. I mean, it's...
Yeah.
This is going to get readjusted when the survey comes in, right? I mean, when the survey comes back that we're doing, we're going to be looking at readjusting power pay for all positions, right?
Yes, you will.
So this is, this is not a temporary...
It's going to go on after that too. Because this has nothing to do with that. And this is above and beyond what...
I thought we were looking at doing away with the whole matrix thing where it's got a cap job. I think that's what the survey is going to be doing.
Well, you'll get something very similar to what you have in me in terms of structure of the pay plan. It'll just be adjusted to market values.
How many people is this going to affect, you know, off the top of your head?
You have a feel for that, Mandy?
I would say around 15. 15 to 20, I suppose.
But as I read it, correct me when I get to the wrong place, it's, it's a merit. It's a merit, it's not an automatic.
That's correct.
And you have to show, you have to go above and beyond your job in order to earn this. It's not just a, you've been here nine years bingo, you get this.
That's correct. It's based on a performance evaluation. And by the way, I do think you need a better performance evaluation form, but that's another issue. Sure is coming.
I would move to approve this except with the caveat of breaking it into four payments to avoid the possibility of any increase of the tax bracket because of the lump sum.
Motion is made by Councilman Graybon to approve the merit increase and make it into four payments.
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Ponto. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to hear from Jay. What are, do you have any problem with that proposal that you presented?
No.
Just a matter of working it out.
No further comments. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the...
Do you see any on that?
Robert Ralston for you guys?
Well, I don't know who you got.
That's your program.
We've given them the cost of living raise here.
Next item on the agenda this evening is the request for bid proposal for refuse collection. Any questions for staff on that one? We have the request proposal in front of me that we had in our package. Pardon?
I moved that we accept it.
Been moved by Councilman Frano that we accept that we approve the bid proposal for refuse collection. Service, have a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilman Ponto. Any further discussion? No further discussion. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda this evening, need a motion for adjournment. Been moved by Councilman Miller. Seconded by Councilman Miller. Any further discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. We are adjourned. We'll go to the workstation this evening. And the first item on the workstation will be Stuart Porter. Schwab Eaton is going to address us about the East Main project.
All right. I guess I wanted to start by asking if there are questions regarding the plans that were included in your council packets? If there are not, I have just a couple of simple questions for you. I assume based on past interaction with the council that we are ready to begin the advertising process. We are in the finishing touches stage of the plan. We are still developing the specifications, but we think we're just about ready to go out for bids. My proposal to you would be to begin advertising in a couple of weeks and receive bids the middle of September. I wrote down September the 15th. I've got nothing magical about that, but I want to make sure that everybody's on board with going out, you know, getting ready to go out for bids.
I think we're ready to go.
Yeah. The big question then is, does the city want to have work started as soon as possible and give the contractor plenty of time? And when I say as soon as possible, soon as K-14 is complete and open back up to traffic. We don't know for sure when that's going to be. If you would have asked me six weeks ago, I would have told you that we're ahead of schedule on the K-14 project. That's not the case any longer. Dirt work is taking longer. Rain has hindered progress. So I think we're probably on track for completion in the middle to latter part of November. That's, there's a lot of things that will play into the actual position of that project. So once completion, once that project is complete, does the council want to open construction on East Main Street up and run the risk, the potential risk of bad weather through the winter months? And a portion of East Main being closed down during the winter? For the, for the whole winter. And what I would suggest if we are going to allow construction during the winter months would be the portion from Baldwin, close to Topeka. And it would be phased so that everybody has access that lives along the route. But that is the portion of the project where there's quite a bit of storm sewer. And that's, and storm sewer work is good work for contractors during the winter months in all but the nastiest of winter weather. So it would be a good place for a contractor to work. Contractors will be looking for winter work. But we don't want to, I don't want to arbitrarily give the contractor the flexibility to do that without the city's wishes because there will be some people that will be inconvenienced. Local traffic would be able to go out through Topeka, out to 24 by Casey's. But, you know, that's, it's taking a truck route away during the wintertime. I'd like to get comments and feedback from the council.
My big concern is I know of at least one family there, Robson family, that has only one access to that road. They don't have an alley behind them to get out.
Correct. But they do have two driveways. And the plan is to split construction between their driveways so they always have access to one of the two driveways.
So they won't be completely locked up.
Correct. And the, the plan documents will require that access be maintained in one of those two driveways at all times.
I think we ought to start the construction process because if it helps us get a better bid by letting the contractors work through the wintertime, I think we ought to take advantage of that because it's a pretty big project.
And that will be the case. I think we are going out to bid at a very, very good time. KDOT funding, as we all know, is down. Contractors are going to be looking for work into the winter and spring months. I think it's a great time to be going out for bids. But I just want to make sure that we are writing into the documents what we are going to hold the contractor to to starting this, the, the project and whether they will be allowed to work through the winter.
Are we expecting this contractor out here, he's already mobilized two boys to bid on that project?
Absolutely. We are expecting them to bid now.
And if he's not going to get done there till November, how's that work out for this project?
Work out perfect. I mean, potentially. If he knows, if he bids it, I'm saying we won't start construction until that project is opened up. But that would work out very good for him if, if he was able to move directly from K-14 over to East Main Street.
You're wanting construction time starting mid-November, is that what you're trying to?
Well, I just want, I, I want to make sure that we are in agreement that we start the project after K-14 is open to traffic, number one. Number two, I want to make sure that we're all in agreement that, that East Main Street potentially, likely would be closed to through traffic during the winter months. Because the contractor, if you give them the opportunity to start digging in the, in the late months of this year, he will probably take advantage of that and work through the winter months. Most of them will.
I'm looking for a little clarification between working days and completion date, as you're asking there. So the working days basically would give greater flexibility because of weather condition being taken into effect?
It would, it would. If, if you want the contractor to take the risk of having a completion date, say June 1st, so that, so that we're assured that it would be open when harvest hits next year. He's taking a little bit of risk, not a lot, because I think we're giving him enough time. But if the city wants that assurance that it is going to be done by a certain date or by Memorial Weekend, you know, if, if that's the desire, that's a big weekend in town. We can make that happen. I don't know if I'll get any pushback during the bidding process, but the only way to find that out is to put that in the documents and, and see what questions I get.
Could not possibly push the cost up?
Well, it's always possible, but I think we're giving them enough time in advance that I don't think it would affect the cost much. I really don't.
I don't really like the idea of having that one more day.
Well, there's going to be some inconveniences, no matter how you do it. But as long as we make contingencies so that all people are served, you know, as far as egress and ingress, then I don't see any possibility. I want to go back to step, we were talking about access. Since I'm looking at Estelle Schuster, kind of the person that tried Keystone Estelle. Do you know where the bridge is at?
Yeah.
Right, the first house at the east of that bridge.
On the south side?
South side. Will there be, I mean, they do have the alley behind.
Correct.
But I'm looking at winter months.
We may have to work with the city.
I mean, the gentleman to the east of Estelle, he's got off-street parking there on the east of his house, but Estelle has nothing but the alley.
That's a good, that's a good point. We could talk, we can talk to her about what she would want to have for access. Talk to the city about putting some hard surface scene in the alley. I don't know. That is, that is one of the tough ones.
Because she would be the only one.
And she would only be without a driveway for the period of time, for, for one period of time. Because we will be providing access to Robinson across the street via one of his driveways or the other. That means that there's a break right in that vicinity, a break in construction right in that vicinity. So her, her loss of access would be cut to a limited timeframe. But you do have a valid, a valid point.
I would like to have somebody visit with her about that situation, just to see what we can do. I mean, I, knowing her, I know there's not going to be a problem, but just to keep things communications open. On a EDR standpoint.
Sure. Okay. Other comments?
I sort of would go back to what Matt had said about the firm date versus a period of time. I think I'd rather see a set date than we'd ask for things to be completed by rather than a...
I think that started in November. It's six months if we get a good...
Sure. Is, is everybody in agreement that like have it open like the week before Memorial Weekend?
Sooner the better, but we have to use a little common sense.
Well, what's the projected, is there any projected time yet? I mean, has anybody said this may take about approximately this?
Yeah, we have. And, and we think that it is a roughly five, five and a half months of construction. It depends a lot on the weather, especially during the wintertime. Depends a little bit on the contractor, contractor's capabilities. But if they know that there, there is a timeline to work off of, that doesn't necessarily mean that they run their bid up. But what that does mean is that they will dedicate their forces that they have to it once it is ready for construction. That means that they, they will know that they need to have their ducks lined up when K-14 opens.
Where is that truck traffic going to go? Through the street? Through Eighth Street still?
Well, some would go to Eighth. I'd have to check. I don't remember exactly what the interior that identified was, but, but Eighth and 14. And then there would also be the, the truck route, Asherville Road.
So there should be plenty of roads, right?
There really are. It, it's, I mean, it'll be an inconvenience, there's no doubt, but there are routes available.
Asherville's, Road's a pretty good one to come in. You know, there's a small residential area in there that they have to traffic through. Works pretty good. A lot of trucks come that way anyway.
Chad, you had a question? Wasn't it discussed before though that the Eighth Street access off of 24 was not a good idea to be using for trucks to be coming on and off?
Wasn't it discussed before though, that the Eighth Street access off of twenty-four was not a good idea to be using for trucks to be coming on and off because of that grade right there at the intersection? Well, it is. Is there a way to control that and keep that from happening? And that had been talked about before. Now all of a sudden we're talking about Eighth Street being used as an access.
They can come in on Asherville Road or go up around and come in on the Fourteen and give them nice access into the city.
Sure. Oh, absolutely. I agree with that. I just don't know if there's a way to maybe discourage it.
There was a truck today that used it, Eighth Street. They're gonna use it. They may not use it going out, but the local trucks better.
Yeah. Well, coming in is not gonna be such an issue for them.
Right. It's not, once a truck figures out.
Coming out is not gonna be so much.
If it's wintertime, it looks like you have that snow and ice, you're not gonna wanna take a big.